Officially, Ryan. Can we line your line? Okay. All right, if everyone will please rise for prayer and pledge. Heavenly Father, please watch over us tonight as we work on the planning for our town. Help us make decisions to help move the town forward. I ask in your name, men, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of gravity and justice for all.
Final, the final. Okay. Too many jobs, too many jobs. All right, so our call order was at seven oh three, Ange. All right, before we get into reviewing the agenda in a minute, privilege of the floor. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, review and modify the agenda. About the only thing that I have is for correspondence. We also now have thunderstorms, tornadoes, lightning, a preparedness guide from the American Red Cross that Art kindly gave us. He's not going to be with us tonight. So, just the American Red Cross Preparedness Guide. The evidence to that. All right. I can't think of anything else. Is there anything for anyone else? All right, and so can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second. Thank you, Ken. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Okay, we have the minutes. Ange, you can also, when you send these to Carol, you can also copy me as well so we can look them over ahead of time. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a quick public hearing. Did they hear a public hearing?
No.
No, the last meeting was a public hearing. Did we help this, did I miss one? Nothing, since we closed as the speaker, we should be good to go. I don't see anything. Does anyone have any comments about the minutes? Thank you, Ross. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ken. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. All right. Moving on, correspondence. As always, the lead reading's been hitting our mailboxes through email. A lot of the trainings, and not only from counties, but also Planning Federation. And also, as I stated, I printed out the American Red Cross Preparedness Guide for everyone. Art asked that we review this. And he thought it may assist us as we go through the emergency operations plan as well. All right. Moving on to new business. The speaker for the Delaware Solar Project on Spencer Road. So, everything is now in order. Have the...
Yes, we had to wait two full days for the DEC to say nothing.
No kidding.
So, we are officially past that thirty day. So, part two, and what you would need to then go through.
Okay, great. Yeah, we've already, so, part one. Remember that? So, we need to go through... Part two. All right, so this, for those watching, no one? Is the full environmental assessment form, part two, for the speaker, for the Delaware River Solar Project on Spencer Road, as outlined, we have to go through this. I'm only going to do the headings unless a yes is answered, in which case then we have to go through the entire section. So, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. The answer, no. Number two, impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, i.e. cliffs, dunes, or mineral fossil caves. No.
Okay, can you hear when Ken talks? Let me know.
I'm going over the speaker. We're on number three of the long form, impact on surface water. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, perfect. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, i.e. streams, rivers, ponds, and lakes. No. Impact on groundwater, number four. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. Response is no. Number five, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in the development of land subject flooding. Answer is no. Number six, impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source. The response is no. Number seven, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in the loss of flora or fauna. The response is no. Number eight, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. The answer is yes. So, we'll go through these individually. Number A, the proposed action may impact soil classified within soil group one through four of the New York State Land Classification System. The response is no or small impact may occur. Ninety-six percent of the project site is located within MSG two soil. The proposed action may sever, crop, or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. The response, no or small impact may occur. C, the proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of soil profile of active agricultural land. The response, no or small impact may occur. D, the proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agricultural uses, either more than 2.5 acres if located in an ag district, or more than ten acres if not within an ag district. Response, no or small impact may occur. E, the proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of agricultural land management systems. The response, no or small impact may occur. F, the proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. The response, no or small impact may occur. G, the proposed project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan. The response, no or small impact may occur. G, the proposed project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan. The response, no or small impact may occur. Part nine, impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and an aesthetic or aesthetic resource. The response, no. Number 10, impact on historic or archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to historic or archaeological resources. Response, no. Number 11, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. The response, no. Number 12, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, CEA. The response, no. Number 13, impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. The response, no. Impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of energy, of any form of energy. The response, no, it will create energy. Number 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. The response, yes. A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulations. The answer, no or small impact may occur. B, the proposed action may result in blasting within fifteen hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing home. The answer, no or small impact may occur. C, the proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day. Response, no or small impact may occur. Four, the proposed action may result in lighting, in light shining onto adjoining property. The answer, no or small impact may occur. E, the proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. The response, no or small impact may occur. Number 16, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. The response, no. Number 17, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plan. The answer, no. Consistency with community character. Eighteen, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. The response, no.
Go back to what we were about, consistency with the town plan.
Consistency with community plan.
It's not consistent with the community plan?
It's, the proposed action is not consistent with land use plan. So, the answer is no to that because it is consistent.
Okay, I understand what you're saying now.
Yep, no problem. Okay, with that, I'll, which would give a impact of negative or no for part two. Moving on to part three, evaluation and significance of impact. The Town of Candor Planning Board has compared the impacts reasonably expected to result from the proposed Delaware River Solar, DEA, New York Candor LLC Spencer Road Solar Farm Project as outlined herein, including, consider the action as defined in subdivisions six seventeen point two B and six seventeen point three G, reviewed the FEAF criteria identified in six seventeen point seven C one, and other supporting information to identify relevant areas or environmental concerns. For the purposes of determining significant adverse impacts on the environment of those factors listed above, the long term, short term, direct, indirect, and cumulative impact, including simultaneous or subsequent actions to the extent reasonable, as included in any long range plan for the action, any action that is a result of the reviewed action or is dependent on the action was reviewed under six seventeen point seven C two. And finally, the significance of any likely consequences was assessed in connection with the setting of the action, the likelihood of occurrence, duration, irreversibility, geographic scope, magnitude, and number of people affected as consequence of the action, six seventeen point seven C three. And these were also sent out to the other agencies, DOT, and so on, also what we have reviewed at our previous meetings in part one, and now also part two. Speaking, part two, section eight, impact on ag resources. The project site in response is located within an ag district, Tyope zero zero one, mapped by the New York State Department of Ag and Markets. The project site and the associated access roads are approximately thirty acres, approximately twenty-nine acres, or ninety-six percent of the project site and associated access roads are located within a Tyope County NRCF Soil Howard Bradley Loam, zero to three percent slope, which is classified within a mineral soil group MSG two, as mentioned earlier. As the project is proposed to take on agricultural land, the proposed action may sever, crop, or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. Because the project site is within an ag district mapped by New York State Department of Ag and Markets, the project sponsor has been required to submit a notice of intent to place the solar project within the bag district. As such, the project sponsor was required to adhere to the agricultural monitoring and mitigation requirements spelled out in the NOI approval by New York State Ag and Markets. A decommissioning plan has been prepared by Delaware River Solar LLC, presented to our board, to address the removal of the project at the end of its useful life, after which the ag land will be restored to pre-construction condition, thus, no significant impact anticipated on this criteria. In response to section fifteen, impact on noise, odor, and light. Air quality, ground or surface water, traffic or noise level, soil, waste production, erosion potential, flooding, leaching, or drainage problems. During construction, dumps and exhausts from equipment may affect air quality. However, these impacts will be temporary and generally minor in nature. The solar panels will not affect air quality during operation. The solar panels are elevated off the ground on poles and will not create any new imperious surfaces that would exacerbate erosion or drainage problems. The project will possess a stormwater pollution protection plan and will be covered under the New York State DEC Stormwater General Permit, requiring erosion and sediment control inspections during and immediately following construction. The concrete inverter pads will have a small, very small footprint, and any minor stormwater created by this pad will be retained on-site as detailed on the submitted site plan presented to our board. The installation of the solar panels will not increase traffic under, or after construction as only three to five trips to the project site by a project sponsor per year are proposed. It is expected that some noise will be generated during construction activity. All actions, including risks, will be considered, civil engineering, machinery, transportation, et cetera. Impacts due to the construction will be investigated and mitigation measures will be proposed. The contingency provision for the solar facility consists of a detailed analysis of the possible occurrence of an incident while under construction. The purpose is to have a response to maintain the safety of people, environment, and property. The Town of Candor Planning Board has reviewed the full assessment form and the criteria contained in six NYCRR, section six seventeen point seven. We've completed parts two and three of the seeker, FEAF, and we determine that the New York Candor LLC Spencer Road Solar Farm for, or, per, section part one and part two, will not have significant impact on the environment. With that, reasons for supporting the documentation, so, the evaluation of the magnitude and importance of the project impact and determination of significance. Identify the impacts from part two responses described, assess the importance of the impact. The assessment was taken into consideration the design element and project changes, provides reason which will result in a significant adverse environmental impact, which will not. And for conditional negative declarations, we identify the significant conditions imposed that will modify the proposed action, so no significant adverse environmental plan impact will result. With that, I ask, let's go through here. So, the final questions. Upon review of the information recorded on this EAF as noted, plus the additional support, everyone has all their additional support, are there any questions to that? Considering both the magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact, it is the conclusion of the Town of Candor Planning Board as lead agency that. And now we make our vote on impact. As we stated from parts one and two, it shows negative impact. Do we have a no significant adverse impact, significant adverse impact, or will result in one or more significant impact?
No, she just gets that correct.
Yeah, that's correct. We'll go through Candy. Motion, there's motions.
Do you need a motion?
We do need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
A negative impact?
Negative impact.
Negative declaration.
Negative declaration.
Negative declaration.
And then Candy, a second. All those in favor, please say, or any further discussion, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed nay. And Art, that aye? All right, so with that, I will sign off as lead agency to approve the project and the seeker. Any further questions?
Uh, no. Is it okay, will somebody give this to Paul to sign, or should I leave a copy for him to sign?
Uh, if you want to, that would be great. Unless, Ange, are you going to be around? Okay, so, yeah, if you could leave one, that would be great.
Actually, you give it to me, I can put it in the slot. And like I said, I would just give him a buzz and tell him he...
Does he need the whole package, or just...
I, I would give him the whole package.
I didn't even know on there, but...
All right, so I will sign off. The Town of Candor Planning Board, to offend you very much. Any other questions?
Do we need site plan approval now that we've gone through everything, or...
Um, I know we went through the, on the very first meeting, site plan approval, where we asked all of our questions.
Yeah.
And everything. And we, we did vote on approval at that time, so...
I couldn't remember if we covered that.
Yeah, so, no, I believe we are complete. It was just the seeker that we were waiting on. You already went to county. That went through, DOT, you submitted to everybody else, so...
Right, we asked if other people wanted to be lead agency.
Right. Yep, and we also did the public hearing, so, yeah, I think we're all set. We're going to work with our code enforcement officer, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
What do you think you'll start?
I think we're probably going to be looking towards midsummer, end of summer.
In the summer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just about the time the ground really dries up and gets hard.
Yeah.
It's not frozen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, Westmaster updates.
Um, the only update I have is last month at the town board meeting, they mentioned that they were going to or have ordered you guys all official nice nameplates for you guys to have, like they did, like the town board had. So, that's really the only update that I have so far.
Hey, Art, do you still want to be here? They ordered name signs for us, just like the town board has after a meeting, so...
Sorry, Art.
No, that's fine.
You still want, you still want me to leave it up, up top? Art?
The phone?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to continue to participate, is okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right.
Is there a way we can get the minutes, like, a week ahead of time?
Yeah.
Just so I can, in that same everybody's time, I'll hear when you...
Yeah, good.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Art, the question was, if Ange could provide the minutes to all of us ahead of time? Okay.
Yeah, sometimes she sends me for the draft, but not very often.
Yeah, I have been doing that a lot.
All right, moving on to the code enforcement officer updates. We actually received our update. So, it was reported on March first. In the office, they were working on the nine-one-one addresses. On March second, they were discussing two potential variances. On March ninth, a measure for nine-one-one addresses and one inspection was completed. On three fifteen, a foundation inspection and one nine-one-one address was apparently issued. On three twenty-two, work on the circling VAS variance that I believe the Board of Appeals is going to be working on. On the twenty-third, there was issue of one garage and one shed permit. On the twenty-eighth, there was nothing other than office hours. And on the twenty-ninth, there was an insulation inspection done. And the total of the garage and shed permits collected was seventy-five dollars, one CO, one temporary CO, and one certificate of fee, certificate of completion.
So, so, Mr. Gettler reports again.
Yes. So, thank you, Paul, for, you see that? Thank you for putting that in our mailbox. Okay, next, Board of Appeals law updates. So, I went through and re-updated the Board of Appeals law, which involved removal of section three, three point two, and three point three. Now, I'm noticing. There we go, okay. And then, had re-updated according to the words taken from, uh... This doesn't look like the version I printed. I'm bringing up my version.
Will you focus that better for me, Ed?
What's that?
Will you focus that better for me?
Could you focus that better?
Focus what better, Art?
I'm making a joke.
Oh, okay. I'm like, what? Yeah, I figured, well, I didn't open this watch to YouTube.
I don't know the link for that. I tried to get that, and I went on the website, and I can't figure it out.
Okay. All right, one second. I know I sent it to everybody and I had it in there. I'll just find it. Three twenty-eight, okay. So, section three, three point one, Board of Appeals shall have the powers and duties delegated to it according to section two sixty-seven of New York Town Law. Three point two, interpretation requirements, decisions, and determination. Part A, the Board of Appeals may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the order requirement, decision, interpretation, or determination appealed from and shall make such order requirement, decision, interpretation, or determination as in opinion ought to have been in the matter by the administration official charged with the enforcement of such ordinance or local law, and to that end shall have the powers of the administrative official from whose order requirement, decision, interpretation, or determination the appeal is taken. B, the Board of Appeals shall not have the authority to decide matters relating to the Uniform Building Code or other state law. Part three point three, area variances. The Board of Appeals shall have the power upon an appeal from a decision or determination of the code enforcement officer to grant area variances from the area or dimensional requirements which apply in the Town of Candor. In making a determination, part B, the Board of Appeals shall... In making a determination, part B, the Board of Appeals shall take into consideration the benefit of the applicant to the variance granted as weighted against the determinance of the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such a determination, the Board shall also consider, uh, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or the detriment of the nearby properties will be created by the granting of such area variance, whether the benefits sought by the application can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, whether the requested area variance is substantial, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and finally, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of such variance. Alright. So, with those changes, um, with the board, uh, it's copied, basically copied directly from the two sixty-seven New York State Law Book. Uh, with that, I ask for a motion to approve the Board of Appeals law version one point one to be brought forth to the Town Board for their public hearing and then final vote.
I'll make a motion.
Anything?
With that, accept?
Thank you, Ken. Thank you Candy for the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed aye. Alright.
Aye.
Thank you, Art.
Art, it looks fine.
Okay, and Art, I did bring before the board, printed out copies of that American Red Cross, uh, plan, uh, prepared this guy that you had, uh, put in, so thank you.
Yeah, especially the last couple pages I thought were pretty. Did you ever discuss that part of the agenda, that could get the whole business, or?
Uh, that was brought up under correspondence, since I printed it out for everybody, and I also said that we will, we could use it potentially for, uh, updates to the emergency operations plan.
Alright, I, I'll, I'll just tell you now, it's out of, out of the agenda, but, uh, I was trying to get on before that, I just couldn't get it through. Uh, but, uh, we may be able to get some help from the state and northern county and, uh, with that plan. And, uh, I'll give you more details about it. I'm doing the training right now.
Okay.
And, uh, so I'll fill you in, but, uh, we don't have to do it all by ourselves.
Alright, thank you very much. So, uh, moving on to the actual emergency operations and public health emergency plan. Uh, I just have town emergency operations plan in the thing, but it's actually emergency operations and public health emergency plan. Uh, so at our workshop, uh, for those watching, uh, we went through and did update up to page ten, uh, which is almost the full emergency operations plan section. Since our meeting, I went through and typed the thing up, uh, from the PDF. Uh, I added headers and footers to bring it in with our laws, and have also done some, uh, formatting changes. So we still need to work on pages eleven through twenty-two. We, uh, did go through making, uh, things gender neutral, removing names, making it more universal, uh, for, uh, for the future. Uh, and with that, uh, we can either, again, work on this tonight, or, uh, do another workshop, or work on it at our next meeting.
I was gonna make a suggestion that we, we talked about this before last meeting, um, on the setting flowchart, that we make this in the add-on. So that, rather than having to update the document every time there's a new change.
You mean like figure two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, and out of, uh, because an add-on is still, uh, by law considered part of the document. Uh, I say that, uh, figures are just totally eliminated, and they can have a separate flowchart that they create at the change of every term. And it needs to be.
Or every January.
And we write that, but we write that in to the emergency plan.
So the day after we said there.
Yeah. So.
Where every day there's a change, yeah. So I have a question. We never did find the figure one, did we?
No.
Okay. So I'm like, okay, I'm still not finding this figure one. Okay. What's in the disaster, disaster site? I just said disaster, yes, disaster site.
So I, I spoke with Bob Williams. He says that they have a, uh, an, uh, a memorandum of understanding with the school, that it can be used at the shelter.
Okay.
And for the shelter. And he also suggested that we may wanna work on this plan together with the village.
Yeah.
Get them involved. Uh, so we're not duplicating efforts, and we're all on the same page. Just suggestions that I got.
Uh, just like I said at our, uh, at our, uh, workshop, um, I, I think the, uh, the Town Board would be the ones to, I mean, they presented it to us just to kind of review and go over. Uh, they should work with the other agencies and the village. I don't disagree with Lee's fit. Uh, so, we can, uh, make those.
We should make that recommendation to the Town Board, because I believe it should be off the fire department, the ambulance, the school, everyone is a big entity in this community.
Actually, he even mentioned half of, all those agencies plus the code enforcement, uh, also.
Okay. He needs some, someone to damage teams, because they want people who will back them, or not.
Right, well, yes, that's right in there.
Yeah.
Um, did you type it after that thing that you sent us, or that wasn't, you replayed it in the PDF? Because I found one, I was reading through it, and it says, say in Candor, it said Barton for order TTE.
Yeah, we didn't get that section.
We got that.
They ca, I, I was assuming you were copying and pasting.
I know, I just couldn't know if you would find it, but that's all we.
No, I have not gone through that much yet. It, it was enough to, it was what I. Got to. Uh, so we'll remove figures, include, uh, a section, uh, that must create the flowchart at the end of every term, or if there are, if there are any changes, and we can word it.
Uh, we're just, we're just, every January, they, they, the Town Board reviews it every Jan, their first January meeting.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Because that way, if they have any changes. They'll reflect in that.
So review and update.
So what, could you have them, would, would there be a way of putting that in the organizational plan for the year?
They have to do that.
Yes, yes. Since you want all that other stuff for it.
Right. So review and update at a January meeting, or if there are any changes. So, uh, we will write it in how we want it in that sec, in a section. We'll pick and choose where we, uh, where we want that. So again, I, did I bring it to the board? Do we wanna work on this now, or do we wanna?
I think we'll work on it.
Yeah, let's, at least get something.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have this finished yet.
No. Okay.
Alright, so we're removing the figure, which is on page eleven right now.
Figure two.
Figure two, and also page twelve. Okay, then that gets us into the public health emergency plan. Uh, obviously, the table of contents, the numbers are totally wrong. Okay, uh, takes us to page fourteen. Yeah. Going through essential and non-essential positions. Alright. Uh, we'll just go through them one by one, uh, if anyone has any different thoughts, please bring it up. Assessor clerk, non-essential. Attorney, non-essential. I question that one.
I think the attorney should be.
I think it should be essential. Single decision, or advice?
Bookkeeper, yes. Bookkeeper essential, but attorney not. Uh, bookkeeper essential. Code enforcement essential. Councilman, non-essential.
The county councilman?
Yeah, that makes no sense.
Yeah, to me too. I think they're the, they're some of the main ones.
And I'm gonna put town. Council. Essential. So we'll update that. Uh, court clerk, non-essential. Court security, non-essential. Uh, we don't really have court security, but.
I thought we did.
No, they do.
They do have a court security.
Oh, do they?
They have, they have one guy, one church person, he comes here to make sure that.
Oh, court not, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, uh, the council. I'm like, does it have?
Oh, it does have security, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, cleaning and maintenance, non-essential.
Uh, I disagree with that.
I disagree with that as well, Art, uh, because maintenance, what if there is something that must be handled at the town hall, or if that's a.
Goes out, you know, the, this will take you the bike, whatever. Yep.
Dog control, essential.
Really?
I would not think that they would be essential.
Yeah, I would say not.
In an, in an emergency, is there really necessary to go take care of?
Here's why they think it's kitchen there, the dog, you know, of some bad flood, now there's all these, where the dogs run through town, and people just up and left them.
And also from other towns, uh, if there is a natural disaster or something, and people have to evacuate quickly, the co, or a dog control can also assist in mobilizing the animals, getting them to a safe haven, or something like that. I understand why they have it, I, you know. So. Highway superintendent, yes, essential. Highway employees, essential.
Pit employee?
No, they, they give some pit, like, clean, you know, fix in the truck maybe?
No, they don't have a pit.
Yeah, they don't have a pit. I, I think you're right, Candy, but we don't have a gravel pit anymore. So, that can be.
Should we eliminate that one?
Yeah.
And then save some bad, I mean, they're gonna review the, if there is one of that.
Alright, cloud wingman, essential. Pump maintenance employees, essential. Summer highway employees, essential. Summer mower operator, essential. Why would a mower be essential?
Yeah, I don't think so either. Have you let the grass grow?
Supervisor, non-essential, or essential. I'm gonna bring in my next line up, sorry. Supervisor, essential. Wow. Deputy supervisor, essential. Sorry, Bill. Tax collector, essential. We don't have a tax, no, we have the town clerk that does the, and we have already listed, so.
Yeah.
The tax collector's in the.
Yeah, but she gets paid a couple of dollars for that, probably, like, because.
We don't have the town clerk before then. Town clerk's on the next page.
Oh, sorry, yes. So do we get rid of the tax collector?
Yep. Town clerk, essential. Town clerk deputy, non-essential. Town justice, non-essential.
The town clerk deputy, there's a lot of work with it, which you need extra help. Um, she usually uses help during tax season and on the season and stuff, right?
But if it's an emergency, that, that would be.
And she's doing a lot of organization.
Another time, they make a lot of phone calls and stuff. The town clerk may need extra help. And if it's, since you already put the thing that they could work from home, they could, uh, the phone should be, uh, how you wrote it, they, they would be able to, uh, go, you know, tie into the office, and even into their machines, uh, from home.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we're gonna have to, I, I, we don't have that hooked up, that I'm aware of. And if there's a natural disaster, there's not gonna be somebody from the cable company coming to hook that up.
I mean, if there's a plan and.
But it's, they can set up, they can set up, uh, a VPN, right?
Yeah, but, well, but there's an act, there's an extra cost to that, first of all, which will cost taxpayers a monthly basis, and we may never, ever use it. For something that.
If, if there's a problem, people are gonna come here, work with us.
Right.
They're not gonna go, they're not gonna say, oh, what's your number? I'll call her at home.
Yeah.
They're gonna come here.
So do we make that essential?
I don't think the. I don't think deputy should be, that's my opinion. What is the rest of that section like? So Art, you think, you think should, Candy, what do you think?
I'm on the fence. Um, I mean, I suppose that if it's, you know, critical, you would like to think that if the quick call, the deputy, after the conference, she would. So say we call the.
Yeah, because if, if essential, you must.
Yeah. I think it's not, I think it's non-essential, if there's need, then I think calling.
What do you think, Ken?
I'm, I'm on the fence too, I.
Why don't we keep it non-essential with the caveat that the town, if they wanna change, if they can, the town clerk should call them first and then.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, town justice, non-essential. Any?
No, I don't think so.
Vital statistics registrar, we don't even have.
Town clerk, pardon, the couple of.
No, that's a different title.
Yeah, it's a different title. I'm just saying, the town clerk does.
Yeah, so.
As part of.
And water and sewer clerk, we don't have that either. We don't have water and sewer.
Are you gonna remove those?
Yeah. Okay, page sixteen. Remote work capability, Art was just talking about, for non-essential employees. Ohio County IT Department has created and retained a SOP O H O S virtual private network account for all, okay, Art, you, you, I did not.
I read it as a thing, that's all I knew about.
Okay. I read ahead. I've been just typing what we got. Um, accounts for all Candor users to allow employees to access their work desktops remotely using personal equipment at home. Now, I, I can't say, I don't know if anyone's actually.
I, I was saying, who, who's, I mean, someone's gotta know, have the knowledge to do that, that they don't have.
Because people don't have the wifi password for the town hall.
I know that in VPN.
Yeah, I know that, I'm wanting to say no.
If they have, every, you know, they can do it.
I doubt, I doubt it.
In work, honestly, but people come here to the town.
If, uh, even if they couldn't get to the town hall, if the, the road was flooded, or whatever, they could still get there by accessing the computer.
Right.
But they have to get it set up.
But what good would they do?
But it's better to set it up before you need it.
Oh, I don't disagree.
If you read this, it's only the people that work in this building, and probably the town barns, that have computers on their desktops, that have these accounts to be given to the computer. That's what that wording does. So for us that are all sitting here, we still have to use our homeowners' lawn system.
Is it like, is it like when you're, like, your own office computer?
Yeah.
That you, you would be able to access the files?
Yeah.
So who is the, who's the clerk, the deputy clerk? The, um.
Virginia. Virginia, Virginia.
Virginia.
So, does she have access to this stuff she do that has been set up for her or else?
No.
I, I don't know, but I'm saying that it would be a good thing to, in the plan, to have them set it up.
Yeah, and, and.
It would be nice, yeah.
And, I, I, again, I, I totally agree with, uh, with that, Art, and I'm one hundred percent behind it. It's gonna be their responsibility.
That's right. If they don't wanna do it, it's fine. I'm just saying, it'd be a good.
You'd like to think it would make them.
Right, and we will bring that to them, uh, when we present the, uh, the plan, uh, with the understanding, and we can write up that document ahead of time together.
I think what we can do is we're gonna hand this, so now they can, well, these, I, in the suggestions.
Yeah, well, this is what we.
When I still question the town clerk, working from home, people got questions, people got need information, they're not gonna. They're not gonna, sometimes they're not gonna want to see a little bit of the phone, maybe they need...
Well, I think the town clerk is essential to be here.
Yeah.
But maybe he, uh, if there's a flood and she can't get here, then she would have VPN access that could get into her computer and access whatever.
I mean, if the building gets blown away in a tornado or something, you know, then, yeah. But then that isn't gonna work anyway, 'cause the computer's gonna be gone, so... Yeah. So, we, we'll present that to the town board indicating that they should set this up, have this ready to go. But, other than that, that's, that's all we can do at that time.
They may even be able to get funding from that from the state, or that from the state.
Okay. Any employee work, working remotely during a state-ordered work shutdown is able to forward their desk phone extension to a designated phone number.
Yep. That's what we were talking about the other day.
Reduction of overcrowding at work sites. Uh, no department would experience overcrowding and be required to reduce the presence of essential staff working onsite at any given time. However, if the need arose, the department head could choose to stagger shifts and alternate the days that employees work.
The thing about the deputy clerk, they may alternate, like, I'll work today, you work tomorrow. I'll work till noon, you work from noon to five, uh, I feel.
Right.
So they can be with their family, I was just thinking, you know, I'm... Just throwing stuff out.
No, no, I appreciate the, appreciate all the comments. Uh, so essential workers, again, bookkeeper is permitted to work onsite on Sundays or work from home. Oh, boy, this is totally... Formatted wrong. Code enforc- or code officer, code enforcement officer. And unfortunately, this, from what I've printed here, I was able to add, as you can see, I couldn't get the bottom, but I was able to at least get the top. This is all literally in JPEG image.
Oh, you have to retype it all?
So, yeah.
This doesn't make any sense. Code enforcement officer is permitted to work onsite at seven AM, but...
Yeah.
We require the town hall opening at nine o'clock.
I, I honestly, I think, I, I, my opinion, we eliminate this section and we put in hours to be determined by town board or whatever. So, hours to be determined.
What we're gonna do for all essential workers?
Yeah. Like you said, they tell the district board, whoever they got on.
Yeah, they turn the...
And they specific with some of the stuff that...
Town board, the head of... Or no, uh, hours to be determined by town board. Did that fit, hours to be determined by town board, that was really all we need. Okay. So that eliminates that. That also eliminates, um, whatever page that is. The page numbers are not gone. All right, provision, number four, provision of personal protective equipment, PPE.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. After, I, I, I mean, essential workers, I have, highway superintendent, highway employees, following man, pump maintenance employees, summer highway employees.
Yeah, we're getting rid of that. Yeah.
'Cause that's just about the work site and, uh, not overcrowded, yeah, get rid of them.
All right, so here's where it's the town of Barton, I understand, the town of Candor. I mean, if Barton wants to buy it for us... All right, the town of Candor will purchase personal protective equipment, PPE, from the Tioga County Health Department or from local vendors. Additionally, the town will supply two pieces of each PPE item for every essential employee. PPE could include, but is not limited to, all equipment worn to minimize exposure to hazards, including gloves, masks, face shields, foot and eye protection, protective hearing devices, respirators, hard hat, plus disposable gown in the neighborhood. I, I've got a problem with respirators, because... Yeah, you have to be fitted, yeah.
So, the N ninety-five, maybe, what they're talking about, but, uh, a lot of that stuff, I'm finding out, we might be able to get put free from the county. I hear that they have pallets of COVID test kits. Eight, no, pallets of boxes of, of, you know, how many, I don't know, in a box, forty-eight, whatever, uh, COVID test kits, and they have, I'm sure they have gloves and masks and all that. The N ninety-five, the New York State hand sanitizer. So we're gonna be able to stock up on that stuff now, getting it from the county.
Problem is, uh, they do expire. That's, uh, that's the only issue, so, um, yeah, I, I mean, take advantage of what we can get now, I agree. Uh, but we also have to keep in mind the expiration date and, uh, length of, uh, of the PPE itself, so...
And we have to also take into mind what is the disaster and what type of protection would it require.
Right.
Just the respirators. Certain on that one, to have that word in there.
Yeah.
'Cause you have to be fit, you have to be trained, you have to be, there's a lot more to it.
Yep, yep.
I'm gonna assume that, I think, maybe they will have been...
I would say mask, which is already mentioned, so...
They do a lot of that stuff, they may have already had for their job.
That's what I was thinking, and if the town's providing that for them, maybe...
Or respirators and put in parentheses, if, um...
If available and necessary.
Well, it needs to be more than that, uh, if, if gone through OSHA requirements, basically.
So we think, take that, follow OSHA requirements.
Yeah, respirators following OSHA requirements, I like that.
Good for me.
Right. That way it covers the town's butt.
Yeah, 'cause that's another dimension, what they would be a respirator for.
Now, if, well, fire, like a big, you know, multi, or if there's a, a dust storm, I mean, there's many reasons to have one, it's just...
Or get a fire department in there.
Yeah.
Are we thinking of having them here, or...
Yeah, go think long term, you know.
If we had a fire in, in happy California, a respirator would be needed.
Yeah, but we will never have a fire like that in California, we are never that trying.
You know.
We don't have that treaty.
All right, let's see, the town of Candor's supervisor's office, the town clerk's office, and the highway superintendent will distribute the necessary PPE to essential employees.
Should we put, when needed, as needed?
I don't mind that.
When appropriate, yeah.
When appropriate, yeah.
And...
That, that's the meanest need, but they should have, you know, hearing protectors or whatever they...
Have when you have any work.
Most of that stuff up above, they should have already had.
Right, yeah. The town's department heads will monitor and maintain the levels of and maintain a sufficient inventory based on a weekly visual inspection and/or input from essential employees.
We changed it to the town's department head to the town's department leadership? Oh, do you all handle...
The town's leadership will monitor.
Yeah.
Although leadership doesn't define. Um, all right. You know, we're using a term that's not mentioned, so... Uh, personal protective equipment will be stored for immediate use at Candor Town Hall and the Town of Candor Highway Facility. All Town of Candor employees will have access to PPE.
Some question is, is it currently? Does it have it?
Well...
Some, okay.
Oh, yeah, they have, for OSHA, they have to have, um...
They have, they have some, okay.
Safety glasses, steel toes, hard hat.
Okay.
Yeah, they buy their own. Power paddles are given two hundred and fifty dollars, I think, per, per employee, for one pair of shoes a year and, uh, other things. Okay, protocol for employee exposure spread prevention and leave time. Oh, my. Employee exposure, the town supervisor with input from the department... The department head will review the situation and, if warranted, follow CDC guidelines and exposure directives from the New York State Department of Health for the specific agent causing the communicable disease. All right, I guess that's not terrible. Employee exhibit symptoms, the town supervisor with the input from the department head will direct what the employee is to do based on the symptomatic directives from the New York State Department of Health for the specific agent causing communicable disease as well as follow the CDC guidelines. All right. Employee test positive, after an employee test, test positive for a communicable disease and after input from the department head. All right, so here, who told the employee to get a test? Who's paying for said test?
If it's required, the town has to pay for it, right?
Well, well, who says it's required?
Yeah, that, that's the question.
I mean, first of all, the employee is going to take a self-test first. Ideally, you take two.
Well, now you're talking about the, the whole thing with the COVID, they take one or they take the two?
All right, well, I guess it does say that, uh, the town supervisor with input from the department head will direct what the employee is to do based on the directives. So, that would be, you must go get a test.
Yeah.
All right, so, I just wanna make sure that everything's clear with this. Uh, the town supervisor will remove the employee from the workforce and will then follow the guidelines from CDC as well as follow exposure directives from the New York State Department of Health with regard to disinfecting and cleaning affected areas.
We're talking robotic play?
See, this is one of the... Well, we have, I'm not a person who is a disaster, could be, it could be a plague, I mean, I think it's...
But COVID is not an emergency or disaster.
Right, right.
They, I think, I mean, I was thinking about it, the respirator, if we get a tanker truck going to town, swerve, and it was carrying some chemical that...
And, and hydrolymonium.
Yeah, and, and, and sprung a leak. First of all, the highway department won't get close to it, and they're not supposed to, only the department.
No, you call the county has...
Has, has, has them in the fire department, so...
Call the fire department, they're not gonna call the hatchback team.
Right, right, they're gonna, they're gonna control the, they're gonna be in control of the...
Don't quarantine the area, keep it allowed.
Yep, and what, what the town can't hear, they're gonna call the state.
All right, I, I don't know.
Well, this place says that they have to follow disclosure directives from the New York State Department of Health.
But here's...
Why can't we just say that?
So, what were you trying to say, Candy, is?
Well, wait a long second. Um, after, uh, follow guidelines from CDC as well as follow disclosure directives from the New York State Department of Health. Something, and there do we need to add with regards to disband, maintaining a bad area? Don't you think that that's gonna be part of the disclosure directive from the Health Department?
They're not certified to do it.
Oh, well.
It's more, sort of carries on to the next one, about disinfecting affected areas.
I mean, I wanna say that this had to have come from the state.
Yeah, it does sound like it.
This had to have come. And they just updated the Town of Candor, Town of Candor Town policy. This had to have come from the state, 'cause it sounds like they're verbiage. So, I guess if it's from the state, we gotta kinda go with it.
Okay, we got it.
It's still like easier to just to say, uh, in, in, in the event of, uh, exposure, follow the state guidelines.
Yeah, yeah.
Putting all this down.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
All right, so...
So the way that you often say it is, state, uh, health department, you know, county's health department, and or, uh, yeah, it's a third agency that they, your guidelines, uh, we should probably get that verbiage made consistent with what we're doing now with COVID.
But that's the problem, Art, the state might change, and then if we don't, if we don't reflect the change...
That's what it's saying, if you're gonna, if you're gonna follow the guidelines that are, like, right now, you don't have to wear a mask. A month ago, you did, so you wouldn't have followed those guidelines, uh, whatever they are, they change all the time as, as needed, uh, right now, central New York Syracuse is a hot spot with the tremendous uptick in COVID, and they're telling people to start wearing masks again, uh, indoors. So things change very rapidly, so if you just say, follow the current guidelines, no matter what they are, whatever, whatever they wanted to do at that time, that's what you do.
Yeah, I just have a problem with the wording before that, like in workplace disinfection. The Town of Candor will utilize the cleaning maintenance employee to disinfect the affected workplace in a manner that is compliant with...
I mean, that's...
They gotta know how to do it.
And they have these huge lights, and they have the fogger.
Yeah, but...
But they're not trained on how to use it, I guess a part-time employee that comes in to, to vacuum isn't gonna know how to do that.
Isn't it good for the town board to do that?
Number two is, we, that's part of the plan, is you train somebody so that they can do it when it's needed.
Well, train them.
It could be anybody, it could be the, uh, code enforcement officer, it could be the person in charge of fogging the building.
But they have to be trained.
Yeah, they have to get trained. Whoever's gonna do it has to get trained, and they have to wear the proper PPE. Basically, the fogger, you plug it in, they don't warm up, you have the chemicals in it, which is like a, about a gallon of a liquid, and you go around it, it animates, it sprays it.
Yeah.
So maybe this is a caveat, so the, the town board, yes, we put this in, she also has to tell her people are getting trained.
Tell the person who's in charge of it, get somebody trained so they're ready for it.
Exactly, but you wanna have that in place before it's too late.
Well, exactly, but I think that's something when we hand this back over to the town board, they need to think these things, these items through and come up with a plan as well, 'cause we can't tell them.
Exactly, exactly.
Maybe we should have a board meeting where they go through this and make a little note chart, so... Yeah.
I'll be mad.
This area, then.
I think we'll be ready by May.
Yeah.
I hope.
I don't think we will by, I don't think...
No, next week?
Next week, no.
No, we won't be able to vote a bill tonight.
No.
All right, uh, so everything stays the same, so, all right. Number six, documentation hours and work locations of essential employees. See attached timesheet log that contains locations, this shouldn't be in the emergency plan.
Nope.
This is not part of an emergency plan.
For contact tracing, which is part of, of the pandemic, that's what it's, it's part of the pandemic emergency plan. So they are trying to create, I mean, this is a terrible log worksheet example. They're trying to create a log worksheet, so they know who contacted...
They stopped doing the contact tracing. We used to, at the health department, used to call, you came in, you tested positive, you wanna know who we were in contact with in the last week? And we'd contact all those people who they, you know, they were tested and, and self-isolating and all that, but we don't do that, they stopped doing that months ago. It got to be less important, and it got to be, you just couldn't do it. We were getting days and days and days behind. Why, it's kind of, we were contacting some of the people, it was too late, you know, they already would've been out of form. That's not...
All right, so, agreed, get rid of this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and finally, last page. Emergency housing for essential employees. The Town of Candor's policy for housing of essential employees shall be that essential workers will be housed at their individual homes if state-ordered restrictions related to a communicable disease pandemic are in place. Hotel rooms may be viable depending upon circumstances, we don't even have any.
Hi, Robin, open up hotels on your property there.
Yeah, that'll be sold, they're awful.
All right, but, uh, fine with me.
Do we, do we leave the hotel rooms to be viable?
Do we even have policies? Or they do their...
I mean, 'cause, I don't, I don't agree, once you put that in there, if an employee can't get to their home, or if they stay in my house... Can I go, can I just walk into a driveway?
A hardship on town.
Yeah, I... Yeah, I.
So do we, are we required, does the state require town?
So the, the, the county has a trailer, uh, from the Red Cross that has chairs and cots and all that stuff in it. Uh, so you just get that and you move it to the town hall or the school or the fire hall or the ambulance squad, wherever they're gonna do it, and set it up there, and that's what they say, if they have to.
Are we getting rid of the hotel?
Yep.
So we're getting rid of the hotel rooms, maybe viable, depending on that?
Yeah, they, they took this from.
I know, because it just wasn't required on that last year, you know.
What, hotel room?
Yeah, I can tell you from the colleges, we had students that we didn't have to house, we paid for them, three days hotel, uh, because we had to have separate corner seating area, so the college had to put the bill.
All right, I will.
We do have two or three bed and breakfasts. We have the one up on, uh, Ratio Road, vows we have, uh, one Phil Jordan has, entry time, and there's a third one, um.
And then we also have that, uh, new barn venue with the five, uh.
That dried cabbage.
Yeah, we got that now.
The town has to, the town has to. So I'm curious if the state has a requirement in there that during a health emergency crisis, if this is part of the, I mean, I don't know, we have to, let me check that.
All right, I don't know. I, I, I think we just take that far.
Yeah, that's what we did.
I think we have to, what do they, what do they put?
All right, so, um, I will type up what.
Changes.
We talked about today and bring that to our next meeting. I'll send it out, cause I don't wanna keep printing and wasting, uh, wasting paper, uh, but I'll send it out to everybody. I'll try to get the formatting correct, uh, and we'll go from there. Uh, then we can vote on it in our next meeting, and then I ask that we do all, uh, come together for a document on what the board should do and we present it as a board.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, that's a good idea.
And we may not even have a ready form by now.
Yeah. All right.
We hit your eyes, but.
It's starting to be, um, should we do a workshop to do that?
I think we can actually do that through email, we just say, these are the things that we wanna.
Yeah, what do we do, be an email, we have to, we call.
Yeah, I can always pull one together quickly. Okay, uh, finally, under new business, um, there's a state municipal facilities funding. I did finally hear back from, uh, from Ascar's office today, uh, and I will, uh, discuss that at a later time, so, you can, uh, well, but there is all this funding available that we're working to get, so. All right, old business, uh, basically the only business would be the workshop, uh, do we want one or don't we? I think we're good? Yeah, all right, so then I have a motion to cancel, uh, the, uh, April workshop.
I have a motion to cancel April workshop.
Okay, thank you Candy, thank you Ken, any further discussion? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Art, opposed, nay? All right, the ayes have it. That's all I got.
Eighteen.
All right, uh, thank you, everybody, well, we need, uh. Who, who's making what?
I will.
Okay, Candy's making the motion, who's seconding?
I second it.
Robin's second, any further discussion?
All right, too late.
All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. All right, thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep.
That's fine, thanks for calling in, Art, I appreciate it.
Gone.
Yep.
Nope, oh, one, we had one.